And welcome to the September 11th, 2024, meeting of the Wilmington School Committee, and welcome back for the 2024-2025 school year. Please join us. Before, sorry, all members are present with the exception of Dr. Bryson, who is unable to join us this evening. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move into our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, August 19th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Just, sorry? I'm gonna do the minutes separate, I'll do everything else together. Mr. Golden, second. Mr. Turner, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
abstain.
Jay, yeah, sorry. In favor, abstains. Okay, so five in favor, one abstention. Sorry, guys. Get the rust off here. We have warrants, grants, six and seven, revolving, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, local, 11 through 19, food service, six through 10, circuit breaker, oh, one, carry forward, number four, number eight, number nine, number 10, number 11, special education, four through eight, capital, oh, three, and payroll, eight, 2028, 2024, and nine, 11, 2024. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, second. Mr. Ragsdale, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Very good. Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 24-25 school year. A few items that are included in the packet under the report tonight, and I will, I'll go in order. On our fourth item, staffing personnel update, I'll invite Ms. Andrea Stern Armstrong, our Director of HR, to come forward to share a little bit more insight around that. But first off, the good news, I think our year has really gotten off to a great start. We are obviously well into the year with a number of days under our belt, but by all accounts, a fairly smooth start overall. There's always some bumps and some, you know, some hurdles to clear when you start up an entire new system, but overall, a very different start this year than that of a year ago with the start time changes and obviously the Wildwood integrating into the middle school and West Campus. So pleased to be able to share that, and, you know, I think certainly the weather has been helpful, and so things are off to a great start, and I just wanted to share that with everyone. As is always the case, we want to take a moment and welcome a number of new staff. We are, as I know I say often, all about people and the people both that we serve and rely upon, the people that work for us and work for you as a school committee. And the school committee packet is a brief highlight with some names and faces of the many new staff that we are so pleased and proud to welcome as part of the Wilmington Public Schools. In some total, we have approximately 550 staff, both full and part-time, who work in everything from our cares program to our classrooms to food services. So we are a big organization. There are, by my count, I think, 86 new staff that are captured here, approximately 15%. We experience turnover, as I would suggest any school district around us does every single year. Some of that is from retirements. One of the employee groups that we often see turnover is our educational assistants. Often, they will go into teaching roles, so very, not at all uncommon. Returning far more to, and Andrea certainly could talk more, but it's more of the norm that we saw prior to COVID. After COVID had changed certainly greatly, but this is not anything out of the ordinary, but most importantly, as I shared with these folks, we know that they have choices. There are a lot of school districts not far from here, but we're thrilled that we've been able to have them join us and look forward to a great year ahead with their contributions to the work that we do. There's a press release that follows, item B, Wilmington High School AP test score press release. Certainly give credit to Mr. Gendron, who put this together. This is back in the summertime, but just a shout out to the hard work and accomplishments of our students guided by our educators at the high school. Eighty-four percent of all Wilmington High School AP students earned scores of three or higher. That's a significant increase from previous years. This is one of many metrics, obviously, but certainly an important one, especially for those students that are college-bound, post-secondary education. And so certainly very, very proud of this. For those that may not exactly be clear about the AP courses or advanced placement tests, these are not tests, there's tests and courses. They enable students who are willing and academically prepared to pursue college-level studies. So an important component of our overall program of studies and just great work and great accomplishments that we're really, we're thrilled about, so shout out to them. Item C, just jumping around topics, I know, but as has been the case, I think every year that I've been here, certainly, it's the intention that we want to bring to the attention of the school community. Our memorandum of understanding, a really important document that really helps guide the relationship that we enjoy with the Wilmington Police Department. This is a document, actually, that really all school districts and respective police departments should have. It's governed by mass general law. We have a great relationship with our police. You should be so proud and fortunate, and I know we are too. They're a great asset here. I won't go into the details, but just in short, to say that the document here really much is very much boilerplate. It has been recommended to school districts to put into place. Both Chief Desmond and I made very, actually no changes to the template that was provided to us. The key areas, you'll see if you took a look at it, is really to govern the partnership between the school department, our personnel, and the police department. An important component is the school resource officers, our SROs, for which we really have three here who are working in our district and helping support our operations. It goes into more detail around the selection and the oversight of school resource officers. And then also an important component, and that's student information. When such occurrences happen and are incidents where there might need to be an interplay at a higher level or a deeper level between students and their conduct perhaps, or incidents that take place, there's really an attention to detail around that. So it is here, it is a document that we post on our school website, and it's one that I just wanted to, again, take the opportunity to share with this committee here this evening. I'll pause on that before we turn over to Andrea, and certainly welcome any questions on any of those items that folks may have.
Mr. Turner.
Just a comment on the API results. I think that's phenomenal, and part of what I think is really important to understand is, in 2021, it was 66%, and it's risen to 84% in just four years. So it's an outstanding result and outstanding improvement, and I'm very, very happy to see that. It's fantastic.
Other, Mr. Exel.
I'd just like to comment on the MOU that Dr. Brand was just referring to. I think that, you know, 14 pages, it's fairly extensive, but it's worth a look through, even just, I think, for members of the community, because it really is, I think, a very measured and thorough description of the kind of relationship that you want to have between a school system and the police department, and then the actual officers that are selected to be SROs. I think one thing that's particularly important is, and this is early in the document, is that it does very clearly explain that the goal in having, you know, a police officer, because again, these are fully trained, fully licensed, police officers, you know, in a school, is not to then turn things that should be school disciplinary matters into law enforcement matters. And that, so there's, I think, really, really strong and thorough language that really explains that even in places when there is overlap in the sense that, you know, activities that could meet definitions for criminal content, and then that in other contexts could be police matters, that these are things that should be left to schools in essentially any situation except when it's just not possible. That school discipline is the, you know, is the goal when discipline is necessary, and not, you know, not further police or, you know, criminal enforcement. So I think this is a strong document, and for, you know, for people, for anyone who is at all uncomfortable, you know, and some, there are people who are uncomfortable with police officers in schools and with school resource officers. I think that, you know, reading through this document will give you a really good sense of the thoughtfulness with which this type of partnership has been engaged.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. If I may, it's a segue, just quickly before we turn to Mr. Stern Armstrong. At the next meeting with the will of the chair, one of the items that I'd like to provide the committee and the community is with an update on our safety and security planning. This is important in any time period, but it's not lost upon me, as I'm sure anyone with the terrible tragedy in Georgia last week. The people's attention, no doubt, is thinking towards that. This MOU was going to come before you anyway, it's par for the course at this time of the year, so there's no connection with that tragedy, but I just think it would be a good opportunity to give you, as a committee in the community, an update on the considerable work that is happening all the time in our school district relative to trying to best be prepared for and ensuring we have safe and secure schools. So the proposal would be the next meeting, perhaps, to give you that insight. And with that, if it's all right, we'll move on to staffing and personnel update. As I said, Mr. Stern Armstrong is here tonight, just to give the committee an update on her department's considerable work to make sure that we have people in place to help support our services and programs. We are very, very fortunate to have her at the helm of the department, working hard to plug all these holes and to help oversee the attraction and ultimately help really foster strong retention with our employees. And so with that, to give you an update, Mr. Stern Armstrong. Thanks.
Regarding staffing based by school, I can say that we started off, I thought, the spring, going into early summer, that we didn't have a lot of positions to fill, and unfortunately, that changed midway through the summer. So we did have quite a bit of transition between retirements and then people resigning, and then there was a lot of internal transfers this year, more than I've seen since I've been in the district, that it just seemed like something opened, somebody got wind of it, somebody wanted to move. It all worked out in the end, and some people moved into positions they feel much more comfortable in, and some that the administrators felt they were much more suited for, so it worked out well. Two things, I made a change earlier this evening. The middle school interim assistant principal, so Brian Kyra filled the interim principal position. A gentleman by the name of Michael Knibell, if I may be saying that incorrectly, filled the interim assistant principal. And there was an announcement that went out Friday, I think it was Friday, so.
Yes.
That was filled, and then there was a special ed position at Woburn Street that we had actually, a staff from a temp agency filling it, and she actually backed out this week, so that position is open. Overall, though, we have, most of our positions are filled. I think that you'll see the special ed position at Woburn Street is open, and we have a .35 general ed tutor position, which just recently opened up as well, which I know that they have some ideas of someone filling that. And then two important roles within the district is the social, emotional, family engagement specialist. We unfortunately have not had a lot of traction on applicants recently, so we just reposted it. Hopefully, we'll get some candidates, but I don't know if there's specific questions, but this is clearly an overview of where we're at. At this point, I do feel like that we're in a good place. Yeah, so.
Thanks, Andrea. Mr. Turner.
So if memory serves, this time last year was about the same number, where you'd filled all the positions. There were two or three that had opened up really late, and so it seems like both this year and last year, you've done an amazing job of organizing and getting these positions filled and ready for the school year. Obviously, having positions open to begin a school year is tough, but it seems like it's really close to zero, and it's been consistently well done.
Yeah. I mean, I can say from my perspective, I'm very good at politely nagging people. I probably said the same thing last year, and so I do. I really start, you know, in the spring, looking for the positions that we know are going to be empty, particularly the retirements, and then start getting filled. I've had other districts respond to me, saying, how do you get your positions filled starting the school year? Because we typically do, we start off with, you know, less than four, I'll say. And it's a lot of me nagging, a lot of me pushing, a lot of just kind of figuring out where we need and who can maybe take those positions, and really, for administrators, looking at each other's openings, so when there's applications, sharing those applications or applicants with each other in case somebody's not a match for a particular school, maybe they're a match for a different school, so, but thank you.
One other point, because it's been a topic that's come up on, it's come up of the number of people coming and going and such things. And if I look at the people who've actually left as opposed to internal transfers, it's somewhere in the range of 38 to 40, which is a little bit less than 10%. And the point I would make to that is, in the corporate world, it's very normal in any given year for 10% turnover, at any company of almost any size, other than the very, very smallest. So I think it's, and education's a really difficult area, and there's, it's a lot of stress on people's, in terms of careers. It's a choice people do make, and we really appreciate it, but it's a tough job. And so to see that sort of turnover seems really pretty appropriate and not surprising. So I think it's a credit to the district, and then our ability to fill them is obviously an amazing thing, but I think the numbers are what you might expect.
Yeah, it's nice to see, we were talking about this, Paul and I, or Mr. Ruggiero and I were talking earlier about, is that you can see it just in the staffing based on, like, I was pulling information for the WTA today and just looking at where people are in their lanes and steps, and we have so many that are in the upper end, which means, you know, they've been here for a long time, most of them, but it is nice to see our staff retention is very high. I was trying to pull numbers earlier regarding a question that you had, Michael, and Ms. McCallie, and it is closer, it was hard to figure exactly, because anything we pull from Aspen, it actually includes certain groups, and to figure out the start and end years and then do it, but it is roughly about 10% that we end up having for turnover. I'll say the retention actually is closer to, like, 93 is what I had figured out, so. So I don't have exact numbers, but.
Can I? I was curious how we compare to other districts, either like the districts around us or comparable size. I mean, I feel like, to Stephen's point, this is, seems on par for us, but how do we compare against others?
I would say very well. I haven't seen a lot of communication yet, but probably by the end of the month, there'll be a lot of communication among the other districts regarding how many positions do you have open? And last year, I can say that we were well, and a good, like, in a very good place. Like, some people were, you know, looking at 15 openings, and we were still, like, three, four. At some points, I didn't even want to comment because I felt mad because they had so many. But yeah, we do compare very well, so.
There's no central database that tracks this, though, Desi, to our knowledge, there's no, so there's no definitive way to be able to pull that number. It's just not some, it's just not a metric that we know for anyone who tracks retention rate, so.
I did ask recently, just to touch on that, and a lot of the other HR directors responded saying they, since COVID, people really aren't looking at it because it just, it's not a valid point anymore.
Sure.
So I assume at some point, people will really start to go back looking at it, but they just don't, so.
Anything else? All right. Okay, great.
I will say, to the district and administrators is a good portion of why people stay. They like it here, so it's a good district.
Thank you.
I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
All right. Before we move on, Dr. Brand, if I could go back sort of to the MOU, but sort of not to the MOU, for the next meeting, you talked about doing a, call it a safety update.
Sure.
Right?
Yes.
I know the police department, or Chief Desmond, or somebody from his team will come. Do we invite the safety committee? Do we invite the fire department? Is that necessary? I was just wondering sort of how we think that might work out.
So I certainly can extend an invitation to the fire department. We, although we don't have a similar document, they're equal partners in our work collectively as part of our district. We do have a building committee, or sorry, we have a district safety committee. We also have a building committee, we can expand upon that more in the update. I can certainly extend an invitation to a couple of members of the district safety committee. In total, it's a rather large group, but Ken Lord helps assist in steering that committee along with one of our high school teachers here. They're not officially the chairs of that committee, but they really have taken leadership roles, so perhaps they might be willing and able to step forth and sort of speak on behalf of our work and the district committee, if that would be all right?
Yeah, I mean, unless the committee has strong opinions one way or the other, I think as long as it gives the committee and through the committee, the community sort of the sense of what work is being performed.
Sure.
Whoever you think best to present that information would be fine, so.
Happy to.
Very good. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the public comment portion of the evening. Anybody that would like to make a public comment? Good evening.
Hey, John.
Just remind you, if you would, your name and address for the record, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Phil Dubai, 524 Shawshene Ave. I heard you guys talking about securing buildings and safety. It sounds great when you say it out loud, it sounds good when you read it on paper, but you're not following through. Glenn, I brought this up to you last year, and it's actually disturbing, that I just went to my kid's open house, and there's no locks on the doors. The ALIS program says, get out if you can or barricade. This teacher can't barricade three doors with no locks on them. And one of the doors, I don't know if you guys, last time, someone spent in an elementary school, Shawshene, and now the West, both my kids are in both those schools. You got a door in the front, main door, you got a door where that gray panel is, and you got a door where that gray panel is. You call it a horrific accident, which it is, but it's a school shooting, we can say it out loud. It's unfortunately normal nowadays. If one room is compromised, they can walk down these back doors, and now the whole corridor is compromised. And the fact that I can put it on paper and say it out loud, and nothing was done, and these doors still don't have locks on them, you can put a $10 hotel lock on the door or change the door up. I'll tell you what, if one of these schools has a school shooting, and I've said at a meeting now twice that these doors need locks, I will make sure every news station is picking this story up, and I'm going to have these minutes recorded, and I'm going to be sending them out, saying, listen, I told these people. Everyone sitting here, I told them, put locks on the doors. I shouldn't have to come here and be aggravated about it. Say it once, just go put locks on the doors. I guarantee you, the new town hall is going to have, be a secured building, every door's going to have a lock on it. You guys aren't going to have your doors unlocked at your office. Lock the kids' doors. I'm a licensed contractor. You don't have the manpower? Pay $1,000, give me the locks, I'll go put them in. It's not that hard. I asked the teacher, what's, how are you barricading that door? That door opens out, this door opens in. She goes, we only can barricade the front one and this one. We can't barricade that one because it opens the other way. How can you barricade a door? The dude just opens it and moves the shit out of the way. I don't understand how you guys are walking through these elementary schools and these middle schools, seeing three doors and none of them have locks on them. Absolutely blows my mind. And I'm aggravated, I'm sorry that I'm aggravated, but I shouldn't have to, I mean, you guys all have two eyes, just walk into a classroom, look around, hey, how can we make this safer? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tamar Richards. I live on Horseshoe Lane in Wilmington. Okay, in 1999, when I was a senior in high school, we as a nation watched as Columbine unfolded on TV, and we were thrust into what is now an all-too-common occurrence. My oldest was in first grade, Sandy Hook happened. He was the exact same age as the kids who died. My youngest was in fifth grade when Uvalde happened, the same thing to those kids, too. And yet again, just last week, we watched as another community was struck by gun violence. My middle child, a current high schooler, says at this point, he just crosses his fingers and hopes their school isn't next. I know as parents, as teachers, as community members, we all have the same goal for our kids, we just want them to come home. We don't want to have to watch them, watch themselves, their friends, their teachers, injured, traumatized, or worse. While searching for information about how this school committee addresses this issue, I found the information difficult to find and quite frankly, lacking. I understand that the responsibility of this committee is large and expansive, and on my end, this is my first time ever attending a school committee meeting. So I'm not here to fault anyone, I'm here to start the conversation on how we, as the community of Wilmington, plan to work together to put an end to this violence. The issue of gun violence is a systemic issue, and it's, isn't something that our community can solve alone, but we can do our part. The last time school security was updated that I could find through this committee was in 2013, on your policies. Since then, the frequencies of these school shootings has increased, along with incidents in our own school of threats. Our understanding of how and why these, why school gun violence happens continues to evolve, and we need to evolve with it. I want to urge this committee to create an advisory board to help create and update policies and procedures that will continue to keep our kids safe. We cannot just put security measures in place, we need to work together with the school staff, with the students, the parents, and all members in Wilmington. As this continues to happen across the country, we can see that it's not just in the community where these incidents happen that are impacted. We all are impacted. So it makes sense that we need to try and find a way to work together for the safety of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate your comments, thank you. Moving on to new business, first item is approval of student activity accounts. Dr. Brand, are you going to start, or are we going to start with Paul?
Mr. Ruggiero.
Very good. Mr. Ruggiero, you are up.
Thank you. Your packet is just a request for approval of the student activity accounts for the schools. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommends that the school committee approve these accounts annually, so.
Very good. Questions or comments about the accounts? Hearing none. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha?
Can I just say it? I move.
There's a recommended motion in the packet.
Okay, I move to approve the 2024-2025 student activity accounts as listed.
Perfect. Mr. Turner, seconds. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next up, contract negotiation. Dr. Brand, I think you'll start.
Sure, thank you. So as noted in the memo that accompanies this item, we have four bargaining units, collectively bargain units, bargaining units for which their contract expires at the conclusion of the current school year. They include the teachers, the educational assistants, the administrative assistants, and the nurses. Just to note, the Wilmington Teachers Association, or WTA, as is par for the course, notifies the school committee and/or the superintendent for their wish to commence bargaining. We've not received that notification yet, but in full anticipation that we soon will. I bring this both to your attention and for your consideration to think about appointing members of the school committee on the respective bargaining units. That is typically the case. Members of the school committee join the members of the administration as the bargaining teams. For point of reference, you'll see the names of those that served last time on the respective, the last time we had negotiations, on the respective units. So it's my recommendation that you start to think about this. You don't necessarily need to take any action on this this evening unless you, you know, so wish, but certainly we do need to have folks in place sooner than later, so.
Okay. I'll start briefly and then certainly open it to the committee by saying that for the teachers, Mr. Ragsdale and Dr. Bryson have been sort of tasked with representing us on that committee for the upcoming negotiation. And for the educational assistants, I'm going to stay on, and Mr. Turner is going to serve as the alternate for that, just so that for those two, we, I think we anticipated they may start or gear up a little bit earlier, but also.
Yes.
So that there was some consistency, right? Mr. Ragsdale was on the teachers' negotiation the last time, I was on the ed assistance last time, and so that there's some familiarity with those. So I would like, we don't have to do it right now, we can have a further conversation. I'd like the committee to at least, you know, move and approve those recommendations tonight, but we should at least talk about the admin and the nurses as well, so. That's my piece. Questions? Mr. Exel.
So I would just like to also note that Mr. Golden is acting as an alternate for the teachers' negotiations as well.
My apologies.
And that it might be helpful to talk a little bit about what kind of commitment serving on these committees entails in terms of, obviously, you can never know how many meetings it will take to come to agreement, but we can at least, you know, give a little information about when they tend to happen, on what type of schedule, how frequently, and so forth.
Very good.
So, Dr. Brand, maybe you can speak to.
Yeah, I mean, it is hard to sort of totally quantify, and, but once negotiations begin, I think the cadence or cycle, at least for the teachers, tended to be every, would you say, two to three weeks. Typically, these are in the latter afternoon. We're talking about employee groups, and so as a general matter or rule, we don't, we allow employees to work their core job and function here, and so it is late afternoon. There's usually, though, you know, respective time limits set on how late into the late afternoon or evening they go. There's usually though, um, you know, respective time limits set on, on how late into the, um, late afternoon or evening they go. But I would say once they commence, it can be two to, sort of every two to three weeks. In terms of how long total time period, that's of course rather hard to say, um, uh, but the, the teachers as a general matter take longer, given the, uh, the scope and breadth of the kind of issues and matters that sometimes are discussed. Uh, the other units are, are usually, um, a little bit more straightforward and usually can, we can move through, uh, more rapidly. So I don't know how much that helps or not, but.
Like, yeah, uh, when are all these negotiations supposed to start? Is there a stagger? Are some gonna be starting, let's say, in like March, some are gonna start in November, or are they all starting right now?
You, you know, um, so we have not been, again, we've not been notified yet, um, there's no, there's no policy, um, or expectation that governs the specific timeframes of these negotiations. If, if, if history is a, is an indicator, u- usually, um, I think it's fair and say that the teachers usually start, um, first. The other units tend to sort of lag a little bit behind that. I don't know, Paul, if you wanna comment on it, you've been through these more than I, but.
Yeah, in, in many years, the, um, teachers would start right after the first of the year, typically, it might start earlier this year, but w- we try not to have the situation that we have right now. We try to stagger them, but it didn't work because we had a couple of one and three-year contracts and then three-year contracts, so they they kind of now are all up at the same time, so ideally, we like to stagger them, but, um, you know, depending on, um, when we receive requests from any of the groups, then we need to collectively decide, you know, talk it through and then agree with, with whatever bargaining unit, when to start, but in the past, they've started around January, it might be a little bit earlier this year.
Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
And, uh, please, um, let me know if this is correct, that all of these units have contracts that run through the end of this school year.
Yes.
So, so we're, we're good for this school year.
Correct.
Um, but it's, so, but this is gonna take us through the end of June, and so we are anticipating negotiating for successor contracts that will begin in July of next summer.
That's right.
Some of them, if I may, it, it, some run through August thirty-first, the way it works, there's a couple there, but but all ten sets of perps, it brings us through this school year and any summer program, or many of them.
Do we know, Dr. Brand, maybe this is, and I know we haven't heard from the union yet, but these meetings generally take place in person rather than Zoom, so.
Yes.
Meaning, it's nice to be in the room together, but also, you know, if you're, you know, in the office or commuting or whatever, you may not be able to necessarily make this commitment.
Right, right, but I, I think, um, that's a good point. I think where we're at now with our experience now underneath us of, of, of holding hybrid meetings, um, that's certainly, I'm sure, could be, um, agreed upon as an option to allow and facilitate accessibility if someone can't be present. That's a really good point, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so I'll leave it to the, to the will of the committee, uh, you know, we, I think we sort of understand who's gonna represent us for teachers and the educational assistants. If we want to, uh, if you guys wanna think about, um, your, you know, potential interest and/or availability, and we can come back to uh, admin and nurses maybe at the next meeting, if you're not, we're not pressed for it, if that would be, unless you guys have thoughts about it now, we can, we can sort of mull it over and come back to it at the next meeting. Let's find my mic.
Okay.
All right. Can we- Yeah, can we, um, approve the teachers and the ed assistants while we're here though, just to get that finalized?
So who was the ed assistants pairing you and Jen once more?
The ed assistants are gonna be myself and Mr. Turner.
Right.
And it looks like teachers are gonna be Mr. Ragsdale and Dr. Bryson, and you're gonna serve as the alternate.
I'd make a motion to appoint the people you just listed. Mr. Ragsdale and Dr. Bryson as members of the ed, uh, teachers' negotiation team with myself as an alternate.
Yep.
And then, Mr. Fenning, Mr. Turner, as the members of the educational assistance negotiation team.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Second? Seconded by Mr. Samaha. Any other discussions? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Think about the admin and the nurses for the next meeting, and we can bring that back maybe under old business, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. That concludes new business. Moving on to old business, first item is the Town Hall School Admin Building Update.
Yeah, uh, very briefly, um, there's a, a item that, um, thank you to Mr. Hooper and, uh, Mr. Palata, who is, uh, helping oversee the project. You'll see activity across the street, but we really haven't had an update, um, on the Town Hall School Administration Building recently, so it just, it seemed timely. You can see, uh, the brief memo along with some photos in there. Um, the great news is that, uh, the work went, um, as planned through the summer. Uh, the student parking lot was taken offline, um, and that was necessary to uh, facilitate some underground or infrastructure work there. Um, it was all completed on time, so certainly, um, our appreciation to the team for making that happen. Our student parking lot, well, a little bit smaller in size, um, than, uh, previous years, still has plenty of parking, uh, for our, um, upperclassmen. And they've been great partners in helping facilitate the marking of those spots and so on, so the parking lot opened, um, as was pl- planned and expected. Uh, as we understand it, it's on time, um, and on budget right now, and we're looking at, um, later in the twenty twenty-five year in which it's anticipated that the building will open. The memo and some of the other things, and the milestones that will happen in the, in the fall, but um, works well underway, and so, um, that's, that's a, that's a great thing, and really just wanted to give you an update on, on that project.
Questions?
Uh, can I ask, Paul, this might be to you, I know you had, you had gone back and forth with Dan a few times. We had anticipated, I think, correct me if I'm wrong on the number, a hundred and fifty or so parking spaces for the start of school. Did we get the ones we expected?
One forty-six plus three handicaps.
Pretty close. All right, very good, thank you. Um, all right, moving along to the Wildwood MSBA update, Dr. Brand.
Sure, there's, uh, there's a few items here, um, but, um, in the packet, um, first, uh, go in order, as, as members of the committee I know are aware. Um, the Wildwood School Building Committee, um, fairly recently, uh, made a vote to extend the timeframe in which um, they would have to make a final decision on, uh, the preferred, um, schematic design. There's a lot of conversation, um, with the MSBA behind the scenes, but the long and short of it is outlined in the memo is, um, the MSBA is very supportive of this. Um, this is not, uh, atypical, as we came to learn with other communities, it happens. Um, at the end of the, at the end of the day, the MSBA wants this project to succeed for our community, whatever the preferred schematic design option is, and they, they understood that the, the interest here was to have a little bit more time to outreach to the community, to try and gather feedback on the many options that, you know, that this project's really considering, so. I won't go through all the detail and the information, but it's a copy of the letter that was sent to the MSBA. You'll see the new proposed schedule, um, there that sort of is of interest in, um, it's, it's hard to sometimes wrap your mind around it, but this is a long-term project, it is a marathon. Um, there's some intensity to it right now with a lot of, uh, effort to try and, um, lead the building committee to a final decision, but we're still talking about a project with an anticipated opening of twenty twenty-nine. Um, so, you know, it's a long way out, but the, these are foundational, you know, moments, I guess, in time, of course, and very important, so. Um, I share that with you for informational purposes only, but certainly, um, we're on track and we're gonna meet the, uh, the, uh, the revised date for that decision. Um, on that note, you'll see a couple of other items, there's been a, a really, uh, I, I have to say, a fantastic partnership with, uh, the Town Manager's Office and the School Department Office and our design team to really take advantage of this opportunity and push out information, um, and seek information back in return from the community on this important project. Um, as the Town Manager has, has very appropriately commented upon, um, this holds the potential to be the largest capital project in this community's history. Whatever selection, option is, is really selected potentially, so it's an important one, and I think that that's not lost upon anyone. The, in, in a strategic way, um, the, uh, the, the focus has been, how can we try and bring into this conversation as many members of this great community as possible? Um, that has started with a flyer, an informational flyer that you, hopefully you received in your households this past week. We've tried to make sure that, um, those that are attending community events, back-to-school nights and so on, are receiving the flyer. It has a lot of information, but we really tried to design it in a way that if you were just tuning into this story now, how could you come to understand what this whole project is all about? Perhaps most importantly though, is the effort to not just have sort of passive conveyance of information, but receiving information back from the community. That's captured on this survey, it's a very brief survey, I, I, I know we, we do a lot of surveys in this, in this work and the, and the work that we we're do, we're doing with the community, but, but this one is very brief, it's very focused. It truly will take but a couple of minutes, and you can access that, um, through the QR code if, if you have a phone with a camera to be able to access that, and there's also a survey link. And, and so that information is all, all captured there. Finally, I just, I'll point out a couple of upcoming, um, meeting dates, because I think that these are important. Again, this is all with the, the spirit and the intent of trying to provide an opportunity for interested members of the community to learn more about the project and to, to ask questions, that's important to us. We have, um, an upcoming School Building Committee meeting, uh, here in this room on September the seventeenth at six thirty. Uh, we have a, a upcoming, uh, community forum, which will be forum number five to date on this project, uh, which I, I think is great, and these community forums will certainly continue even after a decision is made, but this is the next one. It's gonna be held here at the high school in person, uh, on, as I said, on, um, September the eighteenth at six thirty. And, um, we're also holding an information session at the Senior Center, uh, the following day on the nineteenth at two o'clock, but of course, that's, uh, that's open to anybody. Uh, leading up to, uh, the key date of October the eighth, when the School Building Committee will next meet, and, uh, uh, we hope and anticipate make a final decision on the project. So lots of activity going on with the project, um, but, um, uh, provide this for your update, and certainly happy to take any questions if you have any.
All right, questions from the committee?
You guys are quiet tonight.
Yep, thanks, yeah, I have a question. Uh, so thank you for the update on the MSBA and everything like that. Uh, the flyer, so, I, I like the look of the flyer, and I think there's a lot of really great information in there, so I think, you know, the Town Manager with the, uh, Building Committee, I think, did a great job with that. One thing I noticed was, um, I really liked on the flyer how it showed the roll-up of the total cost, if let's say we build Wildwood, like to be a pre-K through K, but then we still renovate Woburn Street in the north, which we need to do, because the schools really need it.
Yes.
And you can kind of see it's almost a wash between, on the local share between that option and building a new school at the north, K through five. The table below though shows the estimated tax impact only for the initial project at hand.
Right.
So it looks, i- i- it, it looks like that both those options, one's significantly cheaper to the taxpayer than the other, but effectively, they're going to be probably about the same.
Right.
Maybe the former option with the renovations would be more, because those projects will be delayed over time.
Yes.
And those costs will go up. So that's something that, um, you know, maybe the committee or someone needs to kind of maybe convey this during the community forums.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I've noticed this from just talking with people around town and also seeing it myself, it's like, well, yeah, that option, we're gonna get renovated and a new school, it'll be fine, and the local shares, my taxes are gonna go up this amount, and this is gonna go up more, but it's actually not the case.
Right.
It'll probably be about equal, right?
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, or more, yeah, depending, whi- which option is selected, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it's an excellent point, um, and, um, I, I, it's certainly, we, we should do our best to try and address this during the upcoming meetings. This is also gonna have to clearly be a point of, of, of focus as we get past the decision to try and garner support for whatever that option's gonna be. And a part of this, part of this important narrative, I, I think you know this from my, my belief in it for the community, is um, whatever option is selected, we, we also equally need to shift our focus to the remaining buildings. Uh, what, what will be the plan for those facilities and how are they gonna be undertaken, but I, I think your point is important and not losing sight of the fact that what we're talking about for the other buildings that may not be selected as part of this project is certainly more than just envelope issues, boilers, windows, and, and roofs. We're talking about necessary repairs to improve the physical learning conditions. Um, and, and, and I, and I, I do think that sometimes that might be being missed by some out in the community. Um, it is far more than fresh paint and, and a new set of doors. We, we, we need to fundamentally change the teaching and learning spaces, because if we don't, there'll still be a building that was built and designed for nineteen fifty, sixty education, and simply not gonna be able to appropriately accommodate teaching and learning in twenty thirty. So that's, that's a, it's a really important point.
Yeah, and, and just to follow on with that, you know, then there, there's the other discussion of, well, a K through three can be built and be okay, but the north still needs to be renovated.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's gonna be incremental.
Yes.
On top of that, and that K through three option appears to be almost the same as building the K through five option.
Yes.
You know, when you look at the, um, amount of the total local share on both of those.
Mr. Turner?
And, and follow along with that, I, I, I think you've, particularly the tax impact, I think you phrase it very well, but the, I, I, I appreciate the chart, and I appreciate that it brings in the repair-only piece, but it's hard to capture separately what the educational needs would be of those other, let's say it was just the pre-K, K at Wildwood. The educational needs of war, of the north and Woburn Street would far exceed the repair-only options that are listed there, so the total cost, if we were to do something less than pre-K five, would far exceed, it wouldn't be a little bit more. Yeah, it's, it's hard to estimate how much more, but it would far exceed those numbers.
Yeah.
And so it, it is, I, I think, a really important point, that, first of all, the tax piece, it doesn't show that to your point, but then, following on, it's not just that, and those are big numbers and important numbers to understand, but they, it would be more to get north on its own to an educational place that was appropriate for the next fifty years. Um, and, and I, I think it's really an important impact for people to understand and.
Yeah.
Trace.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and just with that too, was, um, I think it was said in the flyer, and I think it's been said in some presentations, that that tax impact, it will be probably the highest year one, and then it goes down over time, right?
Yep.
Yes, the, the Town Manager, uh, is, uh, I think, gonna provide an update on, on, um, he, he's actively exploring that fina- very important financial aspect, and I, I think at the next School Building Committee meeting is gonna have an update on, on, uh, on his exploration on, on that whole piece.
Yeah.
That's most recently what he's shared, but I, I know he's, is still very actively looking at that with the folks in his department.
Okay.
Certainly, thank you for the feedback on the flyer, uh, kudos to Ms. Ingrisal, who really worked, um, to design this whole, uh, this whole tool and worked closely with the town, so, um, she was the design and put in, put in the, uh, the hard work to make this possible, but it's, I think it's a great tool and, and is being, is receiving some, some sound feedback. I think the other thing I'll just, uh, quickly share, I was at a, a superintendent's meeting today with, uh, neighboring colleagues and was talking with a, a neighboring colleague, uh, who shared with me that they, uh, they're in an MSBA project now after eight attempts. And I said, wait, e- e- eight attempts, um, they do have a project underway, and I, I just I'm reminded of the fact that, um, again, this is more than just about luck when we got in. It is about demonstrated need, but also timing. But we are here, and we're in this project, and, um, it's a, it's a reminder when folks think, well, can't we just get back into the MSBA project again? Well, maybe, but not necessarily on the first crack, um, and in some cases, many, so. You know, it's, it's an op- it's an important opportunity again that sits here in front of our, our residents, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Exo?
Um, I just wanna point out a few, a few things about kind of where this now puts the schedule. Because I think beforehand, we had kind of this idea of where, you know, when the things are going to happen. Now that, uh, now that, you know, we've delayed the vote, everything is getting pushed back a little bit. So the, so the Building Committee will be voting on October eighth, um, on the preferred design, then we are able to submit it to the MSBA. And so by the time we get to an actual schematic design, like the real project and, and get a, you know, a, a scope and a budget, um, a project scope, we're into April, and it's going in front of the MSBA, it looks like the plan is on, uh, at the end of June, which would mean that we then have to have a special town meeting, uh, in July. Or end of Ju- I mean, the point is like, after we have that number, we have that budget, and we have the approval from the MSBA. So it's just something to kind of think about in how we're just picturing how the, the next year, how this, how the next, um, you know, the fall and the winter and the spring are going to go, that we're gonna be, you know, July before we're going to a town meeting uh, to take that vote, and then, you know, and then a dead exclusion vote in the fall, uh, in October. So you kind of just need to kind of reset, uh, to the extent that people have been paying attention to what the project timeline is. We need a little bit of, uh, kind of just reset of, of where that's gonna, where that's gonna put us. Also, I just noticed that, um, I think there's a typo in the memo, um, under construction, which says that it'll be going to late twenty twenty-nine, and then occupancy in January twenty-nine, I think that means late twenty-eight. February twenty twenty-seven.
Oh.
To late twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty-two, twenty-eight.
Just a-
Yep.
A small thing there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Thank you.
Uh, subcommittee reports. I know you're working on one.
Not ready for primetime yet.
Not ready for primetime yet, all right. Correspondence, Mr. Turner?
None this evening.
Very good. Future school committee dates and other notable items, we've got two remaining open houses tomorrow here at the high school from six to eight PM. And for our Wildwood at Carter Lane, the West Intermediate Campus at six PM, followed by the middle school campus at six thirty PM. The next meeting, I know Dr. Brand just said this, of the school building committee will be next week, September seventeenth, uh, here in this room at six thirty PM. The community forum, September eighteenth, in the, in this building, but in the auditorium at six thirty PM. Uh, September nineteenth, the informational presentation regarding the school building project at the Senior Center at two PM. September twenty-fifth is our next regular school committee meeting, seven PM here in this room. And I'll add two additions to this list. October first is the deadline to take the survey, so please, again, another plug, take the survey. And on ten-eight is the school building committee meeting where they will be voting on the preferred option, and that meeting is also in this room?
Uh, yes.
All right. Very good. Did I miss anything?
Nothing I'm aware of.
All right. With that, that brings us to the end of the meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Golden, second. Mr. Ragsdale, all those in favor? And that is it. Good night, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And we'll see you next time.